I'd like to call the planning commission meeting of October 16th to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler.
Present.
Mr. Cohen. Mr. Schubert.
Present. Stanford.
All right. This is the first of two tonight. We have a double header. Begin with the public hearing. Additional use permit, private recreational facilities. From a parcel 64 dash 09679 Darrell Road, the PUD district.
The absolute. Oh, say your name and who you're representing and your address?
Sure. Name is Benjamin Ockner, O-C-K-N-E-R. I'm with Burns, Ockner and Greenberger. We represent Fifth Avenue Station LLC and Deer Run LLC. Here this evening on a conditional use permit to allow a swimming pool and clubhouse that will include a leasing office for the Deer Run Apartments. The property is zoned condition, uh, excuse me, it's zoned PUD. It has, this is a portion of a parcel that was sort of left as a remnant in the Ethan's Green development. And Fifth Avenue Station purchased the property a couple of years ago. We've been working on this project for a while. And we've given a great deal of thought to it and we have been privileged to work with the city's planning people and law director even a little bit. And we, we are still working on a couple of details with the law department. But basically, this is a, we're proposing to put a swimming pool in and a clubhouse that will include a sales office and a model apartment. The model apartment will be a model and it will be solely for marketing purposes. No one will be living there. The building is a little smaller than what I gathered from your planners' report. It's only about 7,000 square feet gross and net square footage is about 6,200. And we've gone through the parking regulations. Our engineer, Brent Hartman, has calculated that we need 16 spaces and I calculated that we need about 17 spaces. One of us has to know what they're doing and so it's somewhere in that range, I think. The, the uses are, the hours of the swimming pool will be nine to five between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And the, there's a fitness room in the clubhouse that will be open probably later than five. Whether it's to seven or nine, I can't say just yet. There will be an attendant present in the fitness room when it's open. The current site plan, which I think you have this, let me apologize. I provided the city with a, a site plan and also elevations and specifications and plans for the building itself. And unfortunately, the first page of that was another site plan, which I would ask that you disregard.
So let me just stop.
Yep.
Kind of gave us an overview before we delve into the site plan. Right now, we have the public hearing portion.
Okay.
And then we're going to have a work session where we can actually talk about that site plan.
Sure.
Uh, once we close the public hearing. But because it's a conditional use permit, we have to have, required to have a public hearing. So thank you for that overview.
Sure.
Just bear with me one moment. I'll see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak regards to the public hearing for this conditional use permit. Anybody in the audience like to speak or against this? Hearing seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and then we will delve into the work session. And you don't have to repeat your overview. I think that was very, very good. We can talk about the site plan and any issues that are outstanding.
Thank you. And obviously, if Lynn would like to jump in and correct something I say, I won't be offended.
Same. When, when Mr. Walker says we've been at this for a while.
Which is not the city's fault and it's, it's just been a, a plotting process on our end. But like I said, over the last 10 months, we've been very fortunate to have a number of discussions. If I can begin with the most obvious pressing issue presented by the site plan. We've got a parking area that is 12 feet and I think four inches away from the right of way. Now, the right of way used to be 10 feet further back. And indeed, the right of way includes trees and a sidewalk. And the distance from our parking area to the actual roadway on Darrell Road is about, it's a little over 30 feet. So we would prefer, we would prefer to leave our plans as is. I'm not sure what vehicle is available to allow that since the right of way is where it is. Not sure I'd be asking for a variance, but in the event that we need to move the parking lot back, I think we have enough room to be able to do that. But if the planning commission were amenable to, we don't want to move too closely to the property to the east, which is an assisted living facility. And there is a residence on the, to the north and I don't know that how long that will remain a residence. Everything else on the east side of Darrell Road in this area is going to be either multifamily or commercial or supportive of multifamily. The building itself will have a sales office with a closing room. It will have other support offices. And I think part of the sales office is going to be this apartment, model apartment that will be on the second floor. It will include what, what I've referred to as a great room. It's a, it's a big, it's a living room. It's not going to be a place for meetings and gathering and assembly. It is going to be there to simply provide a place where people can sit down when, you know, take a break from swimming or what have you. And on the second floor is this fitness room, which will have an attendant and then the, the model apartment. There will be no commercial or retail use of this property. It will not be turned into some retail operation and then we'll be able to sell it off to somebody and we can, you know, see if we got something over on the city that's the complete opposite of what we're about in this process. So we've come up with a declaration of deed restrictions and covenants and easements. There'll be a cross easements between the Fifth Avenue property and the Deer Run property for parking and access. And the declarations will be very, they'll be ironclad and clear that the only uses permitted of the building will be the swimming pool. Related to the swimming pool and the other uses in the building only for residents of Deer Run Apartments. We have proposed a walkway from the parking lot on Deer Run that is nearest to this property. It's kind of a winding sidewalk because there are mounds in that area that we are keen to leave intact. They add to the ambiance and beauty of the overall development and we do not want to start taking out landscape mounds. We've, we've submitted our analysis of the comprehensive plan and how we fulfill and meet the goals, various goals in it. And I'm happy to answer any questions about, about that or the other aspects of the, of the proposed development. I should point out, there are, I think roughly 560 units in the Deer Run Apartments. And using your zoning code, I think at the time that Ethan Screen was created and I think currently for apartments, it's two and a quarter parking spaces per unit. And so that would be a total of, did the math a moment ago. Yeah, 1,265 spaces would be required and Deer Run has 1,332 spaces. So we're overparked by about 60 some odd spaces. We anticipate that we have 20 spaces on this, on the Fifth Avenue property for the clubroom, the clubhouse and the sales office. We've come up with 20 and two of which are disability, are disability compliant. I think I've expressed a willingness to consider additional if the city thinks that's appropriate. I think that Ms. Muter raised some concerns, good concerns about access to the clubhouse. That we're willing to address through additional handicap parking if, so long as we can fit it all in. We have talked about a number of other issues relating to access that, that have come up in the last 10 months or so. And we've, we're trying to come up with ways to make the swimming pool and clubroom, clubhouse as available to everybody as possible. The farthest unit from this particular property is just under a half a mile away. Now, that is, that's, that's something of a haul. It's not as the crow flies as using the existing roadways and driveways. We have, my clients have roughly 14 similar developments that they are involved with managing. And that have apartments with a clubhouse and swimming pool arrangement. And their experience has been that people like to swim and people will come to the swimming pool during the summertime. But they never get an overwhelming number of people there. And people will use the fitness room and the, and the clubhouse. But they've never had any kind of an issue with an overflow situation. This property is near Sherwin Drive and Darrell Road. And the driveway is as far south away from Sherwin Road, Sherwin Drive as we can get it. So we are, we are sensitive to potential traffic issues related to that. But we are confident that we're really not adding any parking, any traffic, I should say. Because the people who are going to be using this are already there. Some people might try to drive over and use the parking lot from the apartment house. That is going to be forbidden. That's not the purpose of the parking. It'll be there for, for guests, potential, I should say, potential tenants. There'll be room for delivery vehicles. There will be handicap parking available. And, but we've come up with this walkway as a way to not only, as basically the sole pedestrian access to the property. So that there, we don't expect a lot of people are going to be driving from the apartment complex and to the building. And we don't see that happening. Obviously, in the course of our experience, if there is a problem that develops, we're, I think we will, we will cooperate with the city and come up with ways to fix it. So I'll just add that there are 14 other properties that my clients own with similar facilities. And they've got like seven outside of Kansas City. There are two in Toledo, I think, and there's one in Cincinnati, Minneapolis. So Toledo is probably not all that similar a community, but Minneapolis and Kansas City, I think, are closer to Mark Cincinnati as well. So we have a high level of confidence that this is going to be, that this is going to be a great addition for the city and for our residents, tenants. And that it's not going to create any untoward traffic problems. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I'll start off. I agree, addition is a nice amenity for the residents. The problem I see with it was is when this whole development was originally laid out years ago, this wasn't part of it. So this is kind of an add-on. And I think you're doing the best you can to provide that. The issue I have is with setback for the parking and also the ingress and egress onto Route 91. I think not because of traffic, it would be confusing. Think that maybe they can, there and around park, maybe they can, clubhouse. Your current leasing office is contained within the facility and it's part of the drive. And this was developed way back when. That was a thing on Old Loop Road, any ingress or egress except on the roadway. So I think we're kind of taking a step back. So you know, you have that landscaping mound, but you have some people working on it. I would prefer to see the design where the entrance or the parking at the clubhouse and the pool and everything is through the development. So it's less confusing for folks. So people in development know that that's where they go and they don't have to go out on the main road. I think it's going to be a disservice for your residents who are going to drive over there to have to drive out on the road, quick turn in, have to get back out on the road. That's just.
I should point out that Fifth Avenue Station LLC and Deer Run are similar entities. They're related, but they are separate. And they have financial and business reasons for the separation that, that I don't, I'm not privy to because that's not what I do. There is a right to access to a piece of property. And, and so we do want to have that access and we do not want it to be confusing for anybody. We will do whatever we can to make sure on our parcel that our residents know that their, their access to this property is by way of the walkway that extends north from the nearest parking lot. And, you know, we've, we've talked about that. We've gone around with, internally with our engineer. And we would, we would very strongly prefer to have the sidewalk there. And the number of parking spaces that's there will, should be a deterrent to too much traffic. And again, we will, we will keep people notified that if they want to use the pool, they got to walk unless they're, unless they're in need of assistance.
So that was my question. You could say the pool, I can get that if I say you're going to walk down. But for the work office, would your car access?
No, no, it's the whole thing, the whole, I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
You would have to walk to the?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
That I would find a little atypical. Nice. I go to the gym all the time. I would. Are there coming home from work or something? Summer, the pool I get it. Gym would be day. Able to access that. Yeah, that's the thing is.
Yeah, we have, I think we have more than enough parking on the, on the parcel to satisfy the, the city's parking requirements already. And I've provided a breakdown. There's a much simpler breakdown than what I provided that our engineer gave me this afternoon. It's basically you have 6,200 square feet in the building. Half of it's going to be for the sales and half of it's going to be for the clubhouse, including the fitness facility. And the total number is like 16 spaces. So we, we, we are providing more than enough parking on the, on the parcel as is. And it's our, it is our goal to make this as appealing and attractive to our tenants as possible. So I, I appreciate the point you're making. I don't, I can't really.
I don't know if I misunderstood that it was discouraged to drive. That's what I wasn't sure.
Well, it, it's, it is, the intention is for pedestrian access to that parcel to be by sidewalk from Deer Run to the parcel, either on the street, which we're trying to move people away from the street, or through this extended sidewalk from the parking lot. We are, that's, that's where we're at.
So now it's kind of, like went off in my head. This is kind of a unique situation. So the whole apartment complex is owned by Deer Run.
Yes.
Fifth Avenue Station is the management company is managing the apartments, correct?
No, I, I don't believe that's the case.
Okay, so.
Fifth Avenue owns the other parcel.
So they own the other parcel. So the management's company is building this facility? Is that it?
The Fifth Avenue will be building.
Okay. So in a partnership with Deer Run, correct?
Well, the Deer Run will be, it's not a partnership.
Okay.
Deer Run will be maintaining the building and the swimming pool and the clubhouse.
Fifth Avenue is going to build this as a service to Deer Run, is that?
You know what? I need to check myself. I'm not sure if Deer Run's going to build it or if Fifth Avenue is. But it's Fifth Avenue's property.
Okay, Fifth Avenue.
And our goal is to, again, tie the property, the two properties together through deed restrictions that would be enforceable by the city, of course.
Other property?
50.
We, we can. We, I mean, we will look at it. I'm, I'm, I've spoken with our engineer and I think we can make an adjustment to move the parking lot further away from the right of way. And if not, getting the 20 feet, at least getting very close, I think we can probably do that. We'd come up with this on our plan and so hoping to reduce the amount of changes that we have to make, but. We don't want to disturb them. If there's a lighting requirement, and I suppose if the building's going to be open past five in the fall, winter and spring, they'll, they'll, there will have to be some kind of illumination.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think the 20-foot setback's a non-issue because we've got their representative on record saying they can work with smart engineers to make it happen. I liked hearing what Commissioner Hoagler said. I have a question. This is more out of experience. Is there any way that we can require some type of signage to remind folks that are parking there that it's for people who may be meeting with a leasing agent or for folks, residents that are using the facility? And I don't know where that would go, but that seems that that would be something that would meet your concern. With regard to what Commissioner Hoagler said, I understand the pool will probably be closed. I would think they would walk to the pool and the gym during the warmer months and then in the colder months, nature takes care of the issue. But I also understand where it's coming from.
I'm not sure. Personally, I don't think signage is needed to say this is the Deer Run Recreation Center.
Sure. I just didn't know.
People that live in the apartments are going to know that it's.
Your concern, Mr. Walker, is signage to make clear to the residents, um, that they're not to, uh, park or that it's only for?
I, I think it's more the latter.
Okay.
Sir, uh, just hearing my fellow commissioners' concerns about, you know, people who might try to use the lot, I think first and foremost will be situational awareness of your leasing staff, like, that person shouldn't be parking here.
Right.
There's ways to take care of that, that I would think some type of just good and cheaper mitigation measure to say, these are the people for whom the parking spots are. Residents only, essential leases, which is something I would think would probably be custom and practice with site plan and stuff anyway. More to a lay concerns.
Okay. And, uh, you know, the, the form in which that can come is, uh, we'll work it out, it could be part of our declaration of restrictions. Um, and, uh, but I, you know, we can, we can certainly look into that.
And I just wanna also say, I'm sorry so many of us were sick last meeting. So thank you for your patience and understanding.
None necessary, sir. We've been at this for quite a while. And, uh, but I'm, I'm sorry you were all sick. I hope you're all better.
Mr. Post, anything?
Um, the only question I had is the workout facility. I, I didn't see a design for inside the building, is that correct? We did not have that?
Not yet.
Is that, is it not that I necessarily? I don't need to see it right now, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, when we talk about a workout facility, I know sometimes apartment buildings like this have three treadmills, two ellipticals, and just like a baby rack of dumbbells versus like a workout facility. So I was just curious what the intention was, because I think the amount you put in there will dictate the amount of people that actually wanna use it. Because I agree with what Mr. Hoagler said, you know, you live even, you know, a third of a mile away, I'm just gonna drive over and use it, I'm not gonna walk there. And so, and my other question to that was, you said someone's gonna be working that rec center, that, that workout area?
The fitness room will have an attendant.
I, I've never seen that before. Usually it's always.
So that would be somewhat bigger.
Yeah, that, that's what's making me think so. Again, if it's gonna have three ellipticals and three treadmills, why would you even need someone working there the whole time unless there's, most of the time it's workout at your own risk, nobody on duty. Most, I mean, even big giant clubs don't have people working two in the morning.
Usually it's a pass card system.
Yeah.
But this, when we get to site plan, we'll get a little bit more.
So maybe I'm jumping the gun on those conversations.
Yeah, well, I think he's providing us kind of with a, a nice conceptual drawing, um, to, to present for the conditional use permit.
Okay, I'm jumping the gun.
If council would, would be gracious to grant that, then they can move to the next phase and come back to us with site plan.
I think it's, I, I think it's a fair question. I, 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 a variation, I ask, are you gonna expect any classes or anything like that there? See, covered all the usual, except for the multi-machine. You gotta have the multi-machine.
Right, you gotta have.
And an exercise, and an exercise ball. Yeah, that has everything in one, but I, I, I think it's a fair question, because it goes to our discussions about what volume could be in the lot, you know, if they're gonna have classes or anything like that.
Um, this is not to be a, it is not intended to be a private health club.
More like a hotel-style gym.
It, it's, I'm not even sure if it's gonna be that, but unfortunately, um, all, all we've got so far is what we've provided, which is just an area for a fitness room. Um, I can't tell you that it's gonna have X number of, uh.
Do you have the size of it or no?
About twelve hundred square feet, I think.
No, the fitness room is twelve hundred?
Yeah.
A little bigger than a hotel one.
Yeah, twelve hundred.
It's a nice hotel one.
Yeah.
Hilton. Yeah, it's a Hilton, Marriott, Marquis.
I, I wouldn't know, I don't go to health clubs. If anything could be more obvious.
Right, so as a reminder, um, Mr. Schuback said, we're, we're not approving a site plan tonight.
Yeah.
For a zoning certificate.
Okay.
We've gone a little bit, um, extended ourselves a little bit further on this application because of the unique ownership, um, the sort of constraints, you know, that exist because of the size of the site and adjacent uses, and the, the, um, just unique character of the connection. And so, some of these site plan characteristics are tied to the use. So we have gone a little bit further and deeper into the site plan.
Yep.
Because of the nature of it.
Yep. And that's why I was gonna ask Ms. Moore if she had anything to add, but I think she'd probably reserve her comments for site plan review.
We're happy for any feedback from.
Anything, anything else?
If someone made that comment, I agree that would be.
Yep, I totally agree.
The seven point six feet can be found, I think.
So circling back, um, in the work session portion here, I think, unless somebody wants to speak, otherwise, um, the, the recommendation will be moved forward here with a, a vote by the dais, but we're going to have three conditions. Um, one condition is the proposed model sales apartment shall be created solely for sales display purposes. The model sales apartment shall not be converted to and/or used as either a long or short-term rental space and/or be connected to utilities for the purpose of creating a habitable living space. Uh, condition number two would be, uh, to address the comments associated with the declaration of covenants and easements provided by the law director and submit a final document for approval by the law director. Condition three would be that the front back, front parking area setback be a minimum of twenty feet for the site approval. Those are what, um, recommendations that were put into the motion forward to council for vote on by the commission. Does anybody have any objections to those?
No, sir. Well said.
So with that, I'm gonna close the work session, we'll open up the regular meeting, and, uh, we'll have you come back up real quick and we'll vote on us. Okay? Um, so moving into the regular meeting, approval of the August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three minutes, we have a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Mr. Walker, second?
Second.
Mr. Shipley? All right, any public participation? Any members of the audience want, wishing to address the planning commission this evening, please step forward. Seeing none, we're gonna move past public participation. All right, we're back to you. Uh, conditional use permit, private recreational facilities, permanent parcel sixty-four dash oh-nine-six-seven-seven-nine Darrell Road in the P U D district. Um, Mr. Walker is representing them. Um, I have no further comments, Mr. Hoagler. Any further comments? Mr. Shipley? Any further comments? Mr. Walker?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Post?
No, thank you.
Lynn, anything else to add?
Would like the ownership group to consider providing a golf cart to transport people from the apartment complex to the pool. I shared that with Mr. Otner today. I, I'm just, I have some concern for folks that may have some mobility issues. It'd be a nice thing to, to offer. I don't know if it's realistic, but half mile's a long way to go if you don't look.
Where do you store that? Which, which apartment?
They actually have, the maintenance guys have golf carts right around that.
I agree, I think it's gonna be a parking.
I will, I'll take that back to the board, and, and we will consider it. And we appreciate the spirit in which the suggestion is made.
All right, seeing no other comments, I move that the planning commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow a private recreational facility in the P U D district with the following stipulations. Number one, the proposed model sales apartment shall be created solely for sales and display purposes. The model sales apartment shall not be converted to and/or used as either long or short-term storage or short-term rental space and/or be connected to utilities for the purpose of creating inhabitable living space. Condition number two, address comments associated with the declaration of covenants and easements provided by the law director and submit a final document for approval by the law director. Condition number three, that the front parking area setback be a minimum of twenty feet from the right of way. Second? Mr. Shipley, seconds?
Mr. Schuback?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes.
All right, that will move on to council, um, council's consideration, and if they have passed it, then you'll have your conditional use permit, and we look forward to seeing you back for a site plan.
Thank you very much.
Discuss that.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks for coming out. Uh, any communications are miscellaneous, Mr. Hoagler? I have nothing. Mr. Shipley?
Just a good time?
Sure, we can do this meeting.
Of course. Um, so outside, there's proposed charter amendments, uh, it's, has all the language that's gonna be in the ballot. Some of it applies to kind of the work we do, so we encourage people to pick it up. Um, Lynn, Code Twinsburg is still going on?
Code Twinsburg is active and moving forward. Um, I would encourage everybody to go to Together Twinsburg, there's a project paid for code updates, and, um, yeah.
Thought to tell.
Go forward to a third public outreach session.
Do you know when it's gonna be?
It's, it has not been scheduled.
I don't know, have any of you all been to any of them? I went to one, their people are very much engaged there. Um, and, and then the third thing, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know how many people watched last week's council meeting, but, um, somebody decided to say some untoward things toward Ms. Muter and her staff, and, um, I'm one of these folks that I know a lot of people don't like me, more the people that do like me, because I'll say exactly what I feel, exactly as I call it. Um, I'm one of the newer members of this commission, not the newest, Mr. Hoagler's the baby member now. Um, Lynn does a lot of good work, and for someone like me who came into this and didn't know anything about it, it's because of her work, her dedication, her preparation, her facilitating everything. She is a great public servant. Um, we've got other folks here who do great public work, we've got a school teacher, we've got a firefighter, um, you know, if you're elected office, it's fair game. You could, you could, the, the arrows are gonna come, but to, to bespurt, dis- dismerch Ms. Muter, I think was very uncalled for, and I just wanna counter those bad words with continuing things for everything that you do, Lynn.
Thank you very much, that means a lot.
I've had a lot of folks work for me. If, if I could clone you and put you in uniform, uh, things would move a lot more efficiently. So it just, it's really uncalled for, and I appreciate council for calling it out when it happens, because there's no place for it. So thank you. Uh, and just, you know, people dedicate, dedicate their careers to public service, and they're not going in there running for whatever position they're in, uh, give them some grace and give them some respect. That's all I have to say. Thanks for the privilege on it, sir.
Well, well said.
Very well said.
And I echo that as well. Sorry I missed it, I was out of town.
Luck would have it, it's on video.
Right, aren't you lucky?
But, um, Mr. Post, I appreciate, uh, you, yourself and council for standing up for the folks that serve our city and dedicate themselves as employees of the city. They have a great group all around, from top to bottom. Okay, uh, if you have to excuse absent members, so, excuse Mr. Cohen from the meeting this evening.
So moved.
Mr. Walker, a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Shipley?
I was waiting on you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, he's so excused. Seeing no other business with this meeting, uh, I move for adjournment at seven forty-four. Roll right into the next meeting or?
Round two.
Break.
Doubleheader.
All right, um, altogether, the res, uh, plant, the rescheduled planning commission from September twenty-eighth, uh, for today, October sixteenth. Call to order, roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Schuback?
Here.
All right, for the pledge of allegiance again?
(inaudible) United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation of God, indivisible, and infinite, and eternal.
I guess I should've said, for the benefit of the folks in the audience, for our law director, we had us actually run these as two separate meetings, couldn't combine them, so that's why the duplication here. So we'll begin with, uh, public hearing, conditional use permit, child daycare center, permanent parcel sixty-four dash oh-eight-three-three-seven-eight Creekside Drive, C-three Interchange Business District. Jeff Paltz and Stephen Pulcik. Want to just give us a quick overview, and then, uh, we'll have, if there's anybody who wants to comment on it?
Okay. Uh, so, uh, my name's John Butcher, I'm actually stepping in for Jeff Paltz. He couldn't make it today, uh, representing, uh, Nephan Associates, we're the engineer for Kitty Academy. Uh, so we'll be looking for a conditional use permit for a daycare facility. Uh, this will be located on Creekside Drive. Uh, this is in a C-three Interchange Business District. Um, this is actually just north of the existing Brewster's Cafe. Um, right now, we are currently also looking for two variances, and those are both associated with the parking on site. Uh, right now, we're actually looking for a front parking setback as well as a parking space setback or, uh, variance. Um, yeah, and I think this is a, you know, eleven thousand five hundred square foot facility, uh, it has a six thousand square foot, uh, playground as well as, uh, associated parking and stormwater management on site. Um, you know, if you, if you're not familiar with the, the parcel in question, uh, basically this is a vacant lot right now, um, again, just north of the Brewster's and just northeast of the, uh, is it Arby's or Wendy's? Um, and so, you know, this, this site in general, um, it's a pretty tight site, uh, you know, easements, a lot of grade restrictions on this parcel.
We can get into the details in the work session.
Yeah.
This is just, I wanted an overview, so if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak.
Yeah.
For it, so thank you for that, uh, summary, and we'll invite you back up.
Yep.
I'll ask to see if anyone wants to speak on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Does anybody in the audience wanna speak, um, on the public hearing, require, um, the conditional use permit for the child daycare center on Creekside Drive? Any members wanna speak? Seeing none, we'll close, uh, that hearing for the conditional use permit for that item. The next one is conditional use permit, outdoor storage, eighty-five eighty-nine Darrell Road, I-three heavy industrial district. Um, if the applicant can come forward and just speak, um, give us a general overview, we'll get into the details in the work session.
Good evening. My name's Joshua Huffine, representing Langen Engineering. On behalf of our client, Extra Lease, this is for an outside trailer storage site. Um, as he stated, it is located in a I-three heavy industrial zone, uh, it's a significant number of parking stalls for trailer storage in a small building. Uh, we're reaching out for conditional use regarding to trailer storage within a building setback.
Very good. Uh, anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this, uh, conditional use permit, please step forward. Any members wanna speak against or for it, please step forward. Uh, hearing none, we're gonna ask you to have a seat, we'll get back to you in the work session, we'll close that one. Um, the next public hearing is site plan, replacement restroom facilities, one zero two six zero Renna Road, Public Facilities District. Um, we have, uh, who's gonna speak for us? Okay?
I'm gonna speak on, on behalf of the city.
Just a general overview, and then if we have anybody that wants to speak against it, we'll, we'll hash it out in the work session.
This is basically a replacement, uh, restroom at the park. Uh, it is, uh, in generally the same location, it is slightly larger to make it ADA, um, compatible, um, but in reality, it's actually has the same number of, um, stalls that are there now, except it now has a, like a, um, changing station and the true ADA, uh, in each one of the compartments, and then there'll be on the backside, a mechanical, a little bit of a storage area. Um, but like I said, it's basically at the same location, just a little bit wider.
Bit bigger. Okay, any members in the audience wanna speak for or against the site plan on the public hearing for the replacement restroom facilities? Any members wanna speak? Seeing none, we're gonna close that, so that'll conclude our three public hearings. I don't think I've ever done this, that many public hearings.
That was a land speed record. I'm just saying.
It's a meat and potatoes work session.
Mark's gonna be jealous.
So, uh, closing our public hearing, we'll move to our work session, so our first item is conditional use permit, child daycare center, if you, if you please come back up, now we'll get. Okay, any members in the audience want to speak for or against the site plan, uh, on the public hearing for the replacement restroom facilities? Members want to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close that, so that'll conclude our three public hearings. I don't think I've ever done this, that many public hearings.
That was a land speed record. I'm just saying.
Only gets a meat and potatoes work session.
Mark's going to be jealous.
So, uh, closing our public hearing, we'll move to our work session, so our first item is conditional use permit, child daycare center, if you, please come back up. Now we'll get into the need to agree. Sorry to make you go up and down, but we have to be formal.
It's kind of like ass.
No, you're okay.
We're court.
Um, so as I said earlier, you know, this is a daycare facility, again, located on Creekside Drive, um, basically looking to get a conditional use permit, uh, seeing as a, this is a daycare facility located in a C3 district.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add before we throw it to the board here?
Um, I think at this time, no, um, I think I kind of covered.
Can I just clarify something before we get started?
Sure.
Um, applicant will seek one variance from planning commission, for the parking lot setback, that's the way the regulation is written, and the, the number of parking spaces, that would be a board of zoning. The regulation gives the authority to grant the parking lot setback, um, due to the conservation easement located on the site.
Yeah, I know it's kind of, we just had a discussion about parking lot setbacks. But this one's a unique because of, um, the layout of the lot and the way it's situated with the curve there, so, um, I think, although I'm a stickler for setbacks, uh, I, I would tend to go with this one only because of the conservation easement. Very sensitive areas that are behind there. Very natural area back there. That, that lot sat vacant for a while, so I'm happy to see, uh, proposed use come forward. I think all those conditional use permits for that district, I think it'll fit in as well, so. I didn't see anything that really stuck out to me, but this is just conceptual, we haven't got the site plan yet, so, I'm good with the conditional use permit. Mr. Hoagler, anything? No. Mr. Shipley?
I don't know if I have any use for, for, then what?
Ninety-one and eighty-two is to go across the post office. You'd have to eliminate the post office and that's where your connection would tie in because everything else is Tinker's Creek or Conservation Area. And I don't foresee that happening anytime soon.
No, I don't see that either. Okay, thank you. I didn't know if anything would go this way. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. There's no room in between this and the post office. To access.
There's a little bit of space. On ends, but there is not enough to even bring a trail in there without the post office allowing access or losing some parking space. Yeah.
So there's no space in between this property and the post office for any access? Okay. Just asking. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, do they also have anything? Uh, we'll get back to you, uh, regular meeting. Next item on the work session, conditional use permit outside storage, eighty-five, eighty-nine, Darryl Road, I three heavy industrial district.
Hello, Gid. Um, again, my name is Josh and, uh, this is a unique situation for this site in particular as we attended a planning commission approximately one year ago. This is the same exact site. Um, I believe the results that were determined from that meeting was a requirement for consolidation of the multiple parcels, the two parcels, as well as, um, the conditional approval had a stipulation that we were to provide a thirty-inch mound in front of the section where the trailers would be facing Darryl Road. Thirty-inch mound would have a staggered double row of five-foot evergreens and the package we submitted for this meeting should already reflect that.
Yes, those are the two stipulations that we probably add in our motion.
That's correct. I also provided the meeting minutes and, uh, the only reason the delay took place is it was identified that there was isolated wetlands on site and we've been working with the Army Corps and EPA and the delay has been what it is. And now we're at a point where we're ready to move forward. Very good. Any additional questions, please?
I'm, I'm good, Mr. Hoagler. No questions.
There was a previous discussion about traffic impact and the trip visits were estimated to be too low to warrant any turning lane. So what you see on our plans is what we had vetted with all the, all the entities.
It was also like noted that there was sort of a dispersed
Yes.
level of activity because.
Yes, it's not a conc- oh, no, certainly not. Yeah, yeah. It's primarily a rental. The site is, uh, it's going to store trailers, but their use is to rent them out during peak times. Yes.
Mr. Walker, anything?
Oh, sorry. I, I, I believe the count is on the sheet. I apologize, I don't have that figure on, off the top of my head, but. It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
What you presented for the conditional use permit, is that what you anticipate presenting for the site plan?
Uh, yes, modified, of course, with all the details. Uh, I believe there's an intended combination of both above and below ground, uh, stormwater detention. Um, yeah, yeah, but obviously we get detailed out, utility connections to the service building.
Yep.
Et cetera.
Okay.
Count of two-hundred-and-ninety spaces.
Yeah, that, I think that's right, yeah.
Well, if you look here, it says, it has the number.
Yep, yep, yep.
Strip.
Takes a lot of trailers.
Fifty-six, fifty-six, sixty-six, and forty-eight.
Mr. Walker?
Real quick, so you said Core is cool with it. Did, uh, they put this under a nationwide permit or a regional permit? Did they see any issues? Did they identify potential wetlands? Have they issued a document on the property yet?
They assumed jurisdiction over it and allowed us to purchase mitigation credits to offset the disturbance, double the amount of disturbance.
So you guys are cool with regulatory? That's all I need to hear.
Yep. Point three acres.
I work with Core a lot, sorry.
Yeah, appreciate your expertise. Okay, um, suppose anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Lynn, anything else to add on?
Nothing else.
All right, we'll get back to you at the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, I am number three in the work session, site plan replacement restroom facilities, park. What more you can add? The drawings that you provided were great.
So, um, yeah, so on the site plan, really, it's, it's going exactly where it was. Um, a few details I didn't give you at the public hearing, it will go up with the, um, final sided, you'll have a slight brick, um, stone veneer on the lower half. It'll be fiberglass, uh, shingles on the roof. Um, and then we are, as this is part of a larger project for the park, we will be making sure we have ADA access going in and the site plan, I think we provided, show how we're bringing up the trail that's going to be a five percent grade or less so that that meets ADA requirements, so there'll be better access to, um, both sites of the park associated.
Great. All right, as far as I, as far as I'm concerned, uh, I want to thank you, Mrs. Bettinson. This is way long overdue. We have some great events at the park and, uh, the only downside you hear is the restroom facility. So, uh, this is, thank you guys for moving forward with this. This is going to be, the, the renderings were great. I mean, I don't think it'll really set off the park. So thank you for all your assistance to Parks and Rec Department to getting that upgraded to state of the art since we are, have a lot of facilities, a lot of events up there, we're, a lot of outside people, especially our annual, so thank you.
I think, I think Mark Cohen had brought up an issue of, um, access. Look at the, our motion, she should see. Find the one for. Question about adding a walk to the restroom facility from the north.
Add a walk to the restroom facility?
So we have it. I, I think maybe that, yeah.
It's a little confusing on the small.
Yeah, I think that's why, yeah.
No, it's okay.
But, but yeah, we, we kind of worked that maybe after the first plan that we had submitted to try and get the project going through your process. Um, we really worked a little bit harder on what actually happens at the restroom.
I took the drawing and went point up there.
Okay.
And it's pretty much the same access that's there now, for the most part. Just a lot more cleaned up.
Okay, so we have that.
Yep.
All right.
Hoagler, any? No question. Mr. Walker?
Thanks.
Lynn, anything else?
That was all.
All right, get back to you in the regular meeting. Okay, our last work session item is discussion on a lot split and consolidation for ninety-three, eighty-five Shepherd Road. Yep, can you hear? Okay. Just a little oversight your name and, uh, your affiliation and address and let's for the record and give us an oversight of what you're proposing.
Hello, I'm Tom Fischetto.
This is Derek Burdis. And, uh, we're here, we have a lot split on, uh, ninety-three, eighty-five Shepherd Road. Um, there's currently a house on the lot. It was built in nineteen thirty-two, it's about nine hundred square feet and it's in pretty, pretty poor condition. And, uh, our proposal is to tear down the house, demolish the house, and there's two garages also. And we would get, remove those houses and then, uh, split the lot. And, you know, we're here more for input from the planning commission on, you know, what they think of the different lot. I gave three different, or we gave three different, uh, options. And obviously those options can be changed and just looking to get ideas before we get a surveyor out there and spend my real money and, um.
Very wise. Very wise. Lynn, can you give us any background?
So, three options are presented. Um, one of them, the ninety, with the ninety-two foot wide lot frontage, that one meets our standard regulatory dimension.
Their option three.
Option three, yes. Then the other options, option number two creates four lots, um, but it has the flag lot sort of arrangement. Um, there are some of those lots in Twinsburg. I think variances have been granted, maybe not for a scenario where we'll have this wide open space, but we certainly have granted this type of lot configuration before. That would get a fourth lot out of this. Number one is three bigger lots, also one of them with the flag lot and then the, the other frontages at a very wide hundred-and-twenty-six feet. So I think, um, what the applicant is proposing there is, hey, we could maybe build some different products, housing products with, say, this bigger lot, that people always want a place for a barn, um, have some animals. Option one would allow that on that rear lot. Option two is a winner because it offers four lots. And then option three, um, is the one that meets the regulatory guidelines. I mean, the nice thing about option three is you would end up with a standard house setback and it would look very, um, I think aesthetically similar to a subdivision type arrangement, houses in a row, um, equal with lots. So it has the beauty of, um, the symmetry going for it.
It's going to be similar to what's there.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll.
Yeah, I think if you're, if you guys are like, I, I don't like this flag lot thing at all, I would not support that, then. The applicant said, well, I'm not going to pursue that.
All right, well, let's, every, members weigh in on it, give you some feedback.
Sure.
So I'll kick it off. Um, I'm with Lynn, I'm not a big fan of the flag lots. Um, only because, um, building behind another house, how do you situate it so that, you know, that house in front of you maintains privacy? Although, you know, when everything's sold initially, it all works out, but then down the road, issues tend to arise. So I'm not a big fan of flag lots either. Uh, I do like option, my preference is option three, uh, for a couple of reasons, because the lot being deeper, uh, gives some benefit to the folks that are in the development behind it. Um, also, I think it preserves some of that woodlands towards the back of the lots. Um, it allows people to build further off the road. Shepherd Road tends to get a little busy at the time. Um, but I think the one-point-three, one-point-four-three acres gives them enough room if they want to have an outbuilding, if they want to, you know, have animals in their yard, dogs run, whatever. So I would, my preference is option three. Mr. Hoagler?
Can I add something that?
Oh, sure.
Just that, when we had the surveyor for the mortgage, they came back and said that the frontage is actually two-ninety-four and I have two-seventy-seven on my sheet, but it wasn't actually, it wasn't a property line survey, it was just a mortgage survey, but he came back and said two-ninety-four. So there may be an additional eighteen feet, just, just wanted to inform you guys so you know.
Yeah, the other issue that I think you might run into, there's, I, I think there's, uh, that property has an active water well on it as well.
Yes, it does.
That ends up, it probably still has septic.
Yes, yeah, we're going to dismantle the septic.
Yeah, so.
We're going to keep the well though.
That's the other problem with the flag lots is then you have to run utilities back.
Right.
So you have more ta, you have more taps and more excavating costs to get utilities. I think your, I think your best bang for your buck, even though it's just three lots, is the option three.
Mm-hmm.
It's easier to deal with and people can then vary where they want their, their home as far, how far, how far back they want it off. It's a nice area.
Okay.
So the question, so option three, everything is.
Yep.
Variation.
Option one does create that nice big lot.
It just seemed more efficient on the land usage, but yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's trade-offs.
Right.
I think option three provides less chance for variances. And is there a minimum of one acre per, per lot?
There's not, only if there were, if central water and sewer were not available, then that kicks in, but it's more than meet the lot area standard.
And then you're saying it would tie in to city water, or you keep the well?
Well, yeah, we're going to keep the well. Right, septic's going to be. No, I, I wouldn't think, no. I would think that would be for one or, or, yeah, no, it'd be just, or wherever the well is.
Okay, just made it sound like the well was just.
No.
No, this is.
No.
No, this, this is that other side of it. S- sorry, sirs, we, we, we dealt with the well issue sometime back. But that means you've been paying attention. Could, could you indicate where the well sits on the property?
Uh, I did not.
Or could you?
Oh, could, yes, I can.
Pretty close to the house.
Um, yeah, it's, it's.
So it's going to be.
If you look at the first page, in front of the house, the southeast corner, probably twenty feet in front of that southeast corner.
So on either.
The south, southwest corner of the house.
So on either alternative, two included, the well would be wholly within?
Yes, correct. Yes.
Um, good work for not having the surveyors, the scale was good, that, this is a nice come-out-and-talk.
Okay.
Uh, my, my only question is, what is your all's preferred alternative and why, if you have one?
I, I guess.
Yeah, sure, so, um, I guess a big thing for me was I, um, would actually address into the property as I do landscaping and property wasn't maintained for, uh, quite a bit. Um, and, you know, being a bigger lot, I think it was a little bit harder for people to maintain. Um, so we thought by dividing it in, you know, smaller sections, it would make it more manageable for people to maintain their landscapes, keep that area, um, beautified. Um, we, we did, you know, we were looking at the, you know, the, the four lot option because it does provide, you know, more homes. I, I did grow up in Twinsburg, I, and, um, you know, went to Twinsburg School District, it provides more homes for families, um, you know, the opportunity to, um, you know, go to Twinsburg Schools and, um, as well as, you know, makes it a little bit more manageable for the, you know, to maintain your landscapes, um, by, you know, portioning it off a little bit smaller is kind of what we had in mind.
You're saying that number two is your preference?
Uh, yes.
But you wouldn't have.
Provides an additional housing lot, still very large lot. Honestly, this, put in a private roadway, you get five lots out of this? Six lots or a lot on a private.
Oh, yeah.
Other words, you've got good problems to have.
Yeah. One, one suggestion, a, a home builder said, if it was option two, and then we're, we're open to all the options, but he suggested that to move the, um, the bottom, more southern L-shaped lot, to move that driveway to the south, southern border so that the one lot in front won't have two, two driveways.
Two driveways.
Correct, yeah. So I never caught that, but the home builder kind of does with that.
Could you have one driveway shared to take people to the back and then split in the back versus having two driveways coming out to Shepherd?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm open to that, but my feeling was.
I don't know that answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, gets into an easement.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, that's why.
That's a cross-assess easement.
Right. I, I didn't want to create problems for people in the future and have them have their own drive and.
I mean, I.
I, I mean, I don't, I agree. People like no driveway, I agree, I'm just.
Who's flowers, who's not?
If you're looking to maximize it, quite honestly, private road and cul-de-sac, um, you could have at least, a little bit like Lynn said, five houses on there. But that's going to get bad into costs as well.
Right, yeah, we're not necessarily looking to, you know, put every lot we have to get in there.
But I will say, and I'm only a fan of option three because I have three acres, I love my lot.
Okay.
Stop making us jealous. So there, there is a market out there, although it's very, it's slim. Um, so, you know, six, one half different. Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion would be option three as one that, if we looks good, we, I'd hate that. My opinion, if I was purchasing something, I wouldn't buy a severe lot like that. Buy one of the ones in option three.
Right.
I would buy one of them. So that's just my, my opinion. Maximize that. I, I thought about the same thing, sort of a cul-de-sac lot, have four houses, little major, have big cul-de-sac that you all share. Yep, hey, because I, I know, I know people that had, unfortunately, had left Twinsburg and moved out because they wanted more space because they can't find property in Twinsburg. I think if you're looking to minimize your costs, option three is the way to go. I think you'd be able to sell those lots easy.
Yes.
Just because it's, it's a great locate, that's a great location here, especially if you work downtown, you're easy commute to get to two-seventy-one and boom, you're downtown.
Right.
So you're in the city, but you, you have some kind of country. Anything else we could do for you?
Not, not. No, I, I like the three lot split on these three drawings for the private drive. I, I'd go with the third one also, just for aesthetics, it would match the rest of the street, but do whatever you want, really, it sounds like.
Okay. We appreciate your input.
That's your most trouble-free, um, option, I guess you'd say. Because once you start doing shared driveways. I don't want it to be lost that it's very, very admirable, admirable that you want to maximize housing opportunities for the city. That's, that's commutable.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks Lynn, too, she's really good. Helpful.
Great. Kudos to you for coming to us before you did any investment work.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, that was because of her.
Yes, and Lynn is a great resource.
Right, yes, for sure.
This is the best me ever.
It didn't cost you anything to talk to her.
And so is Ms. Moore, she's.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Gun.
Yep. Feel free to reach out to them and if you need any more assistance. Okay, that wraps up our work session, we'll roll into our regular meeting, public participation, anybody within the audience wish to address the planning commission, seeing, seeing none, we'll move on to, oh, it's item, listed as item three, but I think it's item two. Anyhow, conditional use permit child daycare center, applicant will come back up. All right, anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so, not at this time, we, I appreciate you guys' time, so.
So. Sheet sheet, sorry. All right. So, um, nothing else, I, I move that the planning commission recommend to city, city council issuance of conditional zoning certificate to allow a child daycare facility in the C-three interchange business district. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Walker? Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Hoagler?
Yes. All right, you got a four-oh vote, uh, that'll go towards council and, uh, they will act on it. Once you get the approval from them, then you can move forward.
For next week, right?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. All right, we look forward to seeing, seeing you back here.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item is conditional use permit outside storage, eighty-five, eighty-nine, Darryl Road, I-three heavy industrial district. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Uh, we talked about the two stipulations, that'll be part of my motion. Is there anything else anybody would like to add?
I would like to add one thing.
Yes, sir.
Lynn is very helpful.
She is, she's a rock star.
Not trying to butter anybody up.
I, I will ask Lynn, are these all folks, Mr. Chairman, are these all folks that were negatively impacted by our illness?
Um, yes.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's quite all right.
Yes, they are.
All right, I move that the planning commission recommend to city council issuance of a conditional zoning certificate to allow outside storage in the I-three heavy industrial district with the following conditions, uh, lot consolidation of the two parcels, sixty-four, dash zero-one-two, one-five, and sixty-four dash zero-one-two-one-three. The other condition is, uh, that along State Route ninety-one, add a thirty-inch high mound with two rows of pine trees, five-foot tall evergreens, staggered, final landscape approval by planning commission when final lines, when final site plan is submitted for review and approval. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Walker, any other discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes. All right, you got, uh, approval to go to council, uh, four-oh, uh, they'll act on it, uh, next Tuesday.
Very good, thank you all.
Look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, site plan replacement restroom facilities, one-zero-two-six-zero over Vena Road, public facilities district. Active in is back again. Anything else to add?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, I move that the site plan date stamped received August thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, for final site plan approval with the following conditions. No, we're not going to add the condition, Mark, because you already have it in. So there's no conditions, I'm sorry, recommend site plan. Mr. Shipley? Any other discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shebeck?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hoagler?
Yes. All right, good to go. Let the construction begin. All right, that wraps up our agenda items, communications miscellaneous, uh, I have nothing additional, Mr. Hoagler?
Sure.
Mr. Shipley? Mr. Walker?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Suppose? Lynn, anything up and coming?
I do want to say something, Lynn's great. Lynn's just awesome.
Since we excused her in the last meeting. But I don't know, Lynn, do we have to excuse Mark again?
Um, I guess.
Yes, I guess we do.
Can't pay him, I'm going to tell, yeah, payroll, we need paid for two meetings here.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Walker? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, he's excused. What's on the horizon?
I think we are going to have another application for a child daycare, potentially at our November meeting.
It's the eighty-two's?
Yeah, should the ballot issue pass.
Should the ballot issue pass, yeah.
That's what we have so far.
Daycare is our business?
Yes.
All right. All right, seeing nothing else, I move to adjourn at eight-twenty-five. Thank you all for, uh, double header tonight.